Sorentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here. Next, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 28th, 2019.
Second.
Any questions, changes? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh, next, Mayor, you had something?
Uh, just one item, just so the residents know, uh, we had our first coffee with the council a few months ago. We're gonna have our second coffee with the council on August 10th. That's at 9:00 AM to 11:00. It's a Saturday morning here. Uh, it was very well received, even on that cold frigid day of, I think it was like twenty below zero or something, it was crazy. We had about at least fifty people here and everybody, we had good feedback, so we're gonna do it again.
Okay, thank you. So, look forward to seeing everybody there. Next, uh, report and recommendation, approval to draft a facade improvement grant application with special, a special for facade improvements at 230 West Irving Park Road in an amount not to exceed $2,895 to be in reimbursement in one payment.
Second.
Any questions? Any questions? Alderman Messina.
Uh, replacement of a mansion roof with, includes soffits. Can you describe the scope of the project?
Not the lower level of the soffit, no.
Okay.
Um, so, just to clarify, the, um, the applicant is here and knows the project in greater detail than I. Uh, obviously, it received a positive recommendation from Streetscape. Um, the facade portion that will, from the city's standpoint, um, is the 2895 number. Obviously, the applicant's investment is larger than that. I think if you have specific questions, I know the applicant knows the project a lot better than I.
I'm good.
No questions? No? Okay, so, easy. No further questions, uh, roll call.
Alderman Sorentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes, that passes. Next, approval to draft an ordinance authorizing a text amendment to Chapter 17, Section 17.502, regarding outdoor storage and Section 17.602 regarding fence regulations.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Cage, did you wanna...
Uh, yes, thank you. Just very briefly, um, obviously, this is an item that went to the CDC. We do come across items in the code that are either out of date or, um, we have requests. And typically, when we have a request for one item that doesn't fit within the ordinance, the applicant would, uh, proceed with a variance. Um, fences on corner lots, um, since I've been here last four or five years, I've had, um, five or six conversations about fences on, uh, corner lots. And on a corner lot, um, you're very restricted where you can have a six-foot privacy fence. Um, the reason we looked into amending the code, and that's why it's before you today, is that we've had a number of requests for people who are on corner lots, who are essentially trying to fence their rear yard, but because they're on another street facade, uh, it's very restrictive. So, if you have young children or a dog and you want a six-foot fence, there is really a very limited section of your lot that you can have a six-foot privacy fence. Um, so, with a number of those requests, um, we proposed a text amendment. Um, there's a couple of items in here, but the, the main one that I know a number of residents are waiting upon is this, um, fences in the rear yard of a corner lot. And what we have proposed, if you back up to another similar lot, you would be allowed to have a six-foot fence. And just to clarify, there are a number of properties in town, um, that do have these existing fences on a corner lot, so we're not doing anything outrageous. Um, and really, the issue that I have is when you have a number of people asking for the same relief items, and you have people out there who have existing fences, and to be very straightforward, those fences are not, that existing are not out of character, and you have someone who's asking for essentially the same thing for their rear yard, uh, it makes perfect sense.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any questions? No? Roll call.
Alderman Sorentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes, that passes. Next, Tesco.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Where do we proceed from here with my...
Call to the...
Mr. Cage, oh. So, yeah? You'll see council agenda next week. There's another meeting?
Yeah.
Good. So, next week's the council meeting, that'll be final action, and then Mr. Cage will be able to take care of you.
Okay. Okay. Shall we wait? We'll wait. Yeah, we'll give him a minute.
They can go without him.
Pause for station identification.
You're just gonna introduce... Yeah, we can go. Yeah.
Well, can you?
Yeah, sure.
You'll introduce him?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Murmice, would you like to take over from Mr. Cage?
Yeah, we're, uh, we're all familiar with Tesco and Associates, who helped us out with, uh, one of our previous, uh, studies, our comprehensive plan. Um, they are currently working with communities along the Route 83 corridor on a grant project that we are a part of, and they're here tonight to kinda share some of the progress on that plan so far, and maybe seek some input from the council. So, uh, Mr. Blue from Tesco is here, and I'll kinda turn it over to him for a brief presentation and Q and A.
Hello, it's good to see you all again, Mr. Chair, Mayor, members of council. Um, we're, we're here with, and I'm here with Kelly Burwick from our office. Um, I forgot, you gotta use both hands here.
It's gonna be tough, but I think we can do it.
I know, I'll see what I can do. Um, the, um, as, as the manager indicated, um, we're working, technically, our client is CMAP, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. So, they have a program by which, uh, they do grants for local technical assistance for, for plans that, um, different organizations, uh, cities and counties wanna do throughout the area. And so, what I wanna do is give you, um, a project overview tonight, talk a little bit about the findings we had from the existing conditions, uh, and talk about some goals and objectives for it. Um, the, the focus of the effort, um, is technically an update of DuPage County's, uh, land use plan. So, the idea, the, the core of this is for DuPage County to take a look at all those unincorporated bits and pieces that are along Route 83, um, and this is only the northern part. Um, our study area is Route 83, a mile either way, that's those red lines on the side, going from Devon on the north, we go all the way down to St. Charles Road, um, on the south. So, obviously, Wooddale and Bensonville are the very, very top of the area. Um, but as I said, the, uh, the, the focus of this is that when all is said and done, that there will be, uh, an update to DuPage County's land use plan. The idea being that they will designate land uses for the unincorpor, for the properties that are unincorporated. Uh, the county's goal here is to do a couple of things. One is to get these properties incorporated where appropriate into other communities. Uh, but what happens at the county is that people come and say, "Hey, we'd like to do X, Y, and Z on this vacant property. Your comprehensive plan calls for it to be commercial." Well, that may or may not be in keeping with what the local communities would like to see. So, the first thing that, the county's first goal here is to true up their comprehensive plan, policy recommendations for these unincorporated areas with the ideas of the communities. That's why we're here tonight. Um, we are a few months into the project. We have completed an existing conditions analysis, which is us looking at, uh, land use, market analysis, uh, and transportation considerations along the full length of the corridor and this, uh, area a mile wide. Uh, the materials we sent, there's a, a link to, uh, an electronic version of it. It's a huge file. Uh, it's about seventy pages in a big file, so we have not printed it for everybody, um, but, uh, you're invited to, to take a look and look through it. Um, so, that's the idea of the, the update to the, the county plan. Uh, the idea too is to do this in keeping, to be in concert with the goals of, uh, CMAP and their recent 2040 plan, and their more recent onto 2050 plan, uh, a plan which focuses a lot, uh, on making good use of resources and, and communities working together. Uh, and the county's final objective here is obviously, uh, to get the plan adopted and to look for formal, uh, adoption acknowledgement, uh, from the various cities and villages that are, that are in the corridor. From our perspective, uh, a big part of this is that the, um, the markets be realistic. Uh, and so, uh, we're actually working with business districts, Inc., who you'll recall worked with us on the, on the comprehensive plan, uh, and they have looked at the market More than just a land use plan, the idea is to also look at the transportation systems. So, not just traffic, but also bicycle connections, pedestrian connections, uh, and, and that sort of thing, and look for what ultimately could be implemented. Um, the towns that are involved, uh, you see here, as I said, it goes down to St. Charles Road, so that's how we get to Villa Park. Elmhurst, interestingly, is part of the process, uh, but there's no unincorporated property that Elmhurst has in it or around it, the way there's unincorporated pockets here in Wooddale. Elmhurst doesn't have them. Um, but they're, um, part of the corridor and part of the, part of the project, so they're also, uh, sharing this. Um, as I mentioned, the consultant team, uh, we're working again with BDI, uh, and a couple of other consultants, uh, Guald Hamilton, looking at the transportation, uh, along with Fish Transportation Group. So, here's the work program, as I said. Phase one was us getting started. Um, phase two was the existing conditions, uh, and to do this round of workshops. So, what we'll be doing is we'll be doing a workshop like this with each of the communities, uh, to give each of their elected groups, either their council or their board of trustees, an update on where we are, and hear directly from them what are their issues and concerns for the area. The third phase is we're gonna go into our plan-making work, uh, which will relate to land use, transportation, and all those ideas that you saw then. Um, before we do that, as I said, we'll do these, uh, workshops with all the communities. We're also gonna have a couple of open houses, and Ed's gonna get an email from me in a day or two, uh, with a request to help get the word out about those open houses. I've got the dates in here, so you'll be able to see them, and, um, look for you to share them. Uh, and then, once we get the plans drafted, we'll of course be back, uh, with you and to, to the open houses. So, in terms of the planning process, um, not too different really than, than what we did when we did the comprehensive plan here. So, the existing conditions report, like I said, it's seventy-four pages, it's thick, there's a lot of graphics. I can of course sum it up in five bullet points, right? Isn't that the way it always works? Um, as we did key person interviews, as we talked to communities, as we talked to various representatives of the communities, we found a few interesting things. One is that Route 83 is absolutely considered to be a vital economic corridor for all of the communities. It's part of commerce. It brings business, it carries traffic, it brings people to, to the shops and businesses in our communities. It's generally seen as not being part of any community, which was sort of interesting. Um, it runs between towns, right? It runs between you and Bensonville. It runs between Elmhurst and Addison and Elmhurst and, and Villa Park. It's not really part of anybody's home, it's that spot at the edge of town. Uh, and so, really, there's not a lot of love for it, is kinda the best way I can describe it. It's just sort of there, it's a way you get around. Um, the other thing that keeps people from really being in love with it, um, is, I can't tell you how many times I heard the phrase, "Taking your life into your own hands," uh, when we talk to people about getting across, either on foot, on bike, or, or even in a car, quite honestly. When we talked with the various communities, with staffs from the communities, about annexing these areas, uh, there was actually a lot of interest in making these unincorporated portions of the county parts of the communities, not just here, but in the other towns we talked to. Um, generally, for reasons that'll sound familiar. One, though, these are opportunities for economic development. Um, and two, uh, it provides an amount of control for the community, right? If there's a code enforcement issue, it's something that you can deal with and not have to deal with the county. Um, much of the unincorporated area is, is residential. Um, those largest areas are, are here and in Bensonville. Um, the zoning of the unincorporated areas is typically also residential. There aren't a lot of conflicts between the existing zoning and the, and the, uh, underlying land use, the sort of thing that, um, planners and, and land use people look for is, where are the existing conflicts? So, the zoning for the county is, is pretty much in place. Um, the environmental conditions are really driven, uh, by Salt Creek. Uh, Salt Creek has, again, another one of these kinda good side, bad side kinda things. Uh, it's, it's an amenity, it's terrific part of a lot of the recreational area that's in, that's nearby, it's a terrific part of some of the paths and trails that are nearby. Uh, it's also a flooding issue. Uh, there are some properties that are gonna be very difficult to develop or redevelop, if they can be developed or redeveloped at all, because of the floodplain that comes with the creek. We looked at the long-range plans for the county and for the municipalities, 'cause again, that's the idea, is to true up those connections. They are generally consistent, residential areas are mostly intended to remain residential areas. Um, where there's a difference there is frankly here, there are those two residential areas that, as we went through the comprehensive plan, we looked at the possibility, uh, of them becoming industrial areas, and we know that there's some movement, uh, in that direction already. So, that change is being incorporated into, um, this look that we're taking at the county's land use plan. In terms of real estate markets...
Can we step back one slide, please?
Yeah.
Do we have questions, or should we wait till the end?
No.
Go ahead. Alderman Messina?
I've quite a bit, so... Kinda say it as I, as I am. I, I appreciate the county and this dog and pony show of bringing you guys here for the long-term plan. They know, they know how I feel about Route 83, very near and dear to my heart, as does Alderman Jacob, because we do their job and we take calls from the constituents. So, this to me, as I read some of this, this is all great long-term, but to me, this does nothing to address our problem, which I could pretty much nail down to four houses. And so, you talked about on this slide, that's right, I didn't mean to stop you, the redevelopment of residential to industrial anticipated in Wooddale. Um, to me, this, this to me just doesn't, it doesn't make sense, right? Because I'm talking about if they did their job and they had code enforcement, actually just focus on those four to five homes, all this extra money that we're gonna make taxpayers pay i- is unnecessary. So, I appreciate this, that to me, that last bullet point makes no sense to me, and probably will make no sense to the three hundred households. Go ahead.
Yeah, the, the industrial component that we're referencing is just the northern part.
The Mohawk Terrace?
Yeah, the part you're talking about is...
Talking about Mohawk Terrace, that's fine, but if you're talking about Irving to Oak Meadows?
No, no, that's not...
That, okay, that's never gonna...
No.
Okay. The, the other question I had that I kept earlier, you mentioned the county's land use plan, and as they continue to jump around the topic, and I'm just gonna start getting three hundred people, households, just go directly to the county meetings, is this plan that you talk about in three phases, how long is this plan going to take to draft? And how long were those three phases anticipated to be?
The project's anticipated to take about a year. We anticipate will be done, uh, in the fall, or early part of, uh, yeah, later this year. That's what I'm saying.
Sorry, Chairman.
Alderman Messina?
So, the draft, the, the plan will take about a year, right? The three phases, which you're gonna have meetings, which we appreciate, how long are the three phases gonna take to actually go through? Is that part of that one year, or is...
Yeah.
Okay. So, the long-term plan, essentially, again, 'cause they keep jumping around the topic, is how, how long is this plan that you're gonna draft? Is this three to five years out, five to ten years out?
It's a great question. The, what the county is looking to do with this, with the land use aspect of this, separate from the other issues, right, is to, to true up the notions for future land use that they have with what the communities have. Right? So, that's just long-term land use planning. The plan, it'll be done in a year. Whether, when those properties may change over, when that development may happen, when that may be annexed, that's gonna be up to the property owners, the cities, and the county. More, most, and mostly the property owners. If property owners choose not to redevelop their properties, not to pursue, uh, coming to the county for some sort of zoning change, that may not change.
And that's the part I appreciate about, the most about this, is that at least the long-term plan addresses some of those issues right away, because I know you're not gonna be able to get these people out of their homes in, in one year, it's gonna be a couple of years, or you're gonna be able to put money into the homes, uh, which I know we can appreciate. I just, I'm tired, I'm exhausted of getting the calls and doing their job, so I'm hoping that you can go back, 'cause I'm gonna go to the next meeting, you can tell them, I'd love, and will be there next Friday, a short-term plan, because otherwise, I'm gonna have three hundred households go to their door and go to their meetings, so we don't have to take their calls. So, I appreciate it, and I didn't mean to cut you off, but I really hope it's part of your conversation, they're gonna contract you to do a short-term plan.
And let's, let, let me be quite frank with you in terms of what this plan is doing, so that as you refer to it, you know where we're going with it, right? The idea is that this part, this planning exercise is more long-term, right? This planning exercise is not about identifying specific properties or specific code enforcement issues, or directly dealing with those issues. Part of the outgrowth of this, I know that the county and CMAP are interested in having, is increasing conversation between them and the communities. Um, at our first meeting, we acknowledged, as part of the process, we set up part of the discussion to be the county acknowledging that there had been issues, and that there had been some things done. In fact, we had it here. Um, and the city staff was very clear, in terms of making very clear to the county and to CMAP, that these were issues that had to be addressed. The land use plan is not necessarily gonna address those. The hope of all those participating is that the added conversation can be useful.
Okay. Appreciate it. Sure.
Mayor, please, you had a question?
Uh, a little while ago, you said something about safety and crossings and things like that, so I've had many people, kids go to Fenton High School, crossing over there from the west side to the east side. Is there anything, uh...
Last two.
Excuse me. So, some type of better mechanism to get those kids across those seven lanes, basically?
So, we haven't started coming up with the brilliant answers yet?
I heard you say something, that's why I...
But, yeah, no, no, and absolutely, and thank you for raising the point. I would just say that that has come up at other meetings, that is on the list. We know that this is not the first time the question has been asked, and that there's not an easy question. Um, the comment came up at, at one of our internal meetings and discussions, be like, you know, if you could put one pedestrian connection over 83, 'cause they're expensive and tough to do, that's where, that's where it ought to be. Um, but that, that question is certainly on the list of, of issues that, to the extent we can come up with a solution, that'll be on there, that'll be on there.
Okay.
Before we get going?
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, what, uh, what is the end goal of this plan? Just to be able to tell the county that, okay, we feel that this should stay residential, this should be developed, or, I guess, what is the end goal?
So, to be very specific, in terms of what comes out of it, it's a land use plan. All right, so the county's updating the land use plan. They have a land use plan now, it's from 1970, I should've written this down. It's basically done in crayon. I mean, it's, it's a very old, out-of-date plan. So, the, the, the key idea here is to get that land use plan updated. Um, in fact, there was an issue here that we talked with, with Ed and Kelly about, where somebody came to the county, there was an unincorporated parcel, um, right next to Wooddale, right? And, um, they, they zoned it, or they rezoned it for office, you're gonna have to remind me if I'm not doing this right, Ed, um, rezoned it for office, was not at all what Wooddale had in mind or wanted, or had it come, had it been in Wooddale, that would've been on your list to have it be office. And what the county has acknowledged and is recognizing is that, that's not the best way to do business for anybody, that ultimately, this property will probably become part of Wooddale, that it'll need services, it'll get better services, there may be a code enforcement issue, and you all want it to be part of the city, right? So, the idea is to take all those various parcels where those questions exist that are in the county, so that when somebody comes to the county, the county knows exactly what the, um, cities and, cities and villages' goals are for those properties. At its most narrow, that's what updating a land use plan is about. Um, part of this desire for spin-off activity of part of that update is to do the kinda communication about things like code enforcement that I mentioned, um, and is to also address some of these transportation and market issues.
Alderman Messina, do you have another question?
Yeah, just one more, I guess, comment, and it's just, I mean, thank you for hearing us out, right? Venting session, but, um, this is great, just, you know, understand that, please, as you take it back, it's the short term. I mean, we were exposed to raw sewage being dumped for five years, known fact at the county, it's not public, very lucky, and, hey, maybe somebody watching this at home could say that. That to me is unacceptable, and someone needs to be held accountable, and I'm hoping this plan draws that out, because that to me should never, ever have been exposed, and that's what infuriates me, that how county could know the problem exists, and there's other problems I know on that corridor, talking to other electeds in other towns that they've completely dismissed. So, if the end goal is to eventually get them to incorporate, they're doing a great job at that.
That's, that's, that's a part of it.
Sorry to say that, but...
Well, it's a part of the goal, and, and look, from a municipality's expensive, uh, perspective, and not just you, but the other towns that we've talked to, there's benefit to having it be in town. If it was in town, you wouldn't be chasing the county around, quite honestly, right? You'd be able to deal with it, you'd, you'd have the control to be under your ordinances. So, that's part of the benefit that the towns along the corridor acknowledge, that I know from doing my work, you're better off having it in town where you can control it. So, that's part of the game here, part of the end game.
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, thank you.
Alderman Sorentino?
Thank you. Uh, you know, I'm having a tough time seeing those streets, and Alderman Messina brought up the boundaries, where it's not going as far south as he maybe thought it was. What, what are the boundaries there, that greenish? East, west, north, south?
And, and this is just, this is just kind of a snapshot as a, as a graphic of the, but if I went back to the whole area, which was, no, now I'm going the wrong way, um, to show you the, the whole study area, this is actually the northern half of the study area. So, uh, the very top of this is Devon, the very top of this is Devon.
Okay.
Right? And then, we go all the way down through Elmhurst, Villa Park, Addison and Villa Park, and we get to, um, St. Charles Road. So, that's the whole breadth of the corridor.
Okay. The, the follow-up to that was, uh, I know there's a developer that's been out there in that area trying to snap up property. Does he have anything to do with what the county is doing, or is the county doing whatever this guy's looking to do?
Mr. Cage, do you wanna take that?
Um, yeah, just very briefly, um, looking at that map before you, there's really three area, unincorporated areas. There's the area just up the street on Wooddale Road and on the, uh, on the east side, uh, around Foster, um, so that's one area, uh, so... Excellent, yeah, perfect, thank you. Forgot that we had that. So, that's this area just up the road here, that's one, area one. Area two, which, uh, Alderman Sorentino was just mentioning, is off of 83 to the north. I'll come back to that in one second. And then, the area that Alderman Messina was talking about, area three, which is further south on 83, uh, that kind of runs along by Deer Path and those areas and by Fenton. So, what you're, uh, discussing, um, or what you brought up, uh, Alderman Sorentino, is this area to the north. Uh, we have had people contact us, developers who are interested. Uh, obviously, you know we have a, uh, uh, public hearing for, uh, the Washington Street unincorporated area, that's coming up at CDC next month. Um, it has been mentioned to us that this area, a portion of this area, may come in for annexation sometime this summer. So, those conversations are happening, it's not something that the city gets involved in until they make an application for annexation. But what it sounds like, and, you know, from the conversations, um, that I've heard of, is that this area off of 83, the north side, the north side of the city, um, will probably be making a, an application for twenty or so acres in the summer.
One more question? Mr. Blue, if you wanna continue with the...
Sure.
Thank you.
In terms of what we found looking at the corridor generally, again, as I said, a lot of the issues about traffic are significant, what can be done about traffic, what can be done about some of these connections, you know? Cards on the floor?
Sorry. Cards on the table, some of these issues are really significant, and some of them have been here for a long time. There's not going to be bike paths that are going to run across Route eighty-three, we don't see that sort of thing happening. I looked at the transportation consultant, and I said, I'm very much looking forward to your answer of how to fix the on-off ramp at Irving Park Road, and how that's going to get onto eighty-three without going through a neighborhood, and he just kind of blanched, right? There's some of these transportation, some of these larger transportation issues are not going to have answers in the short term. But perhaps things that have to do with trails, Fenton specifically, these are the kinds of things that there may be some opportunity for. Again, to try and take the opportunity of going through this land use planning exercise, to try and improve communication, to try and do some of these other things, one of the items that was in our scope of service is to incorporate into the plan, very much because of this kind of thinking, was to look at some of the goals that relate corridor-wide, right? What are the things that, as we move forward with this, with you and the other communities and the county, as the county adopts its land use plan, what kind of goals should there be that even start to get a little bit beyond the questions of land use? And so, based on the public discussions that we had, the meetings that we had with the communities, some of the key person stakeholder interviews we had with some of the developers and businesses along the areas, we took the step of drafting some goals. These are going to evolve over the course of the project, but you got to start somewhere so you make the consultant write goals. And so, what we came up with is really a bit of a reflection of what I've been describing to you, is the need to create a sense of place, or is there need really to create a sense of place for this road that runs down next to people's towns, not in them? Obviously, the community should be looking to benefit from economic development opportunities. How do we create safer travel? There were some discussions here with some folks who live in Wooddale, talking about their homes are close by, and there's a lot of trucks, how do we make that safer? Do we look to define gateways to all the communities? Does it matter? I would tell you that as an example, Addison is very pleased with the way its gateway looks to three fifty, to three fifty-five, right? You've got some nice development down there. Addison right off of eighty-three, not so nice, right? So this idea of gateways, and what is coming into town from eighty-three say about your town, is there value to that? Coordination with government agencies, we've talked about a little bit. Preserving environmental resources, clearly the amount of forest preserve and Salt Creek make that an issue, too. And bottom line is, how do we make people's quality of life better? These are the goals that we ought to do. And why do you do goals like this? This is very much similar to what we did when we did the comprehensive plan together. You kind of put these out as guideposts. So if there's a question about priority, or what do you do, or what do we look at, let's make sure we're addressing these code enforcement issues, because they're about quality of life. That's why we did that. And so then we look to the next level down. And address code enforcement is now at the top of the list, because I'm here, it's actually that way in everybody's memo, it was made that clear in the process to date. And these are some of the other things to pick up on, again, kind of going a little further down. Do we need to better define the boundaries? There are some boundary agreements between the towns. Do we need to project a positive image for the corridor? Does that matter? Those are the questions that we've advanced as things to be thought of and to be considered, and, yeah, you know, hypothetically would be a nice thing to do, and we're going to be testing their feasibility and the interest that the various communities have on those. With that in mind, our goal was to have a little bit more discussion with you on these kinds of questions about land use, about economic development, code enforcement, community character, and their relative importance. And we are taking notes, all right, I'm just standing here talking, Carol's taking notes, about which of these items are most significant to you, we've certainly had a chance to talk about them. Mr. Chair, if there's time and interest on the part of the group to have more discussion or raise other issues, we very much want to hear that. If it comes up later, or somebody wants to share an idea to reach us directly, or contacts us through Ed, we really do want to continue to hear from you about Wooddale's priorities so that that gets put into the mix.
Are there... Alderman Messina, you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions. A couple of questions. I had been told that a lot of this is going to mirror what was done with Roosevelt Road and, I think that's Lombard, I think between Main Street, and I don't know what that other east road...
Did a stretch of Roosevelt, and there's one done for a stretch of Lake as well.
Yeah, where the Sonic is and the Health Club, or Bob's Furniture, I guess. Is that similar? Is that what they're planning for this corridor?
No, we don't, first of all, we don't have what the plan would be yet. The second thing is, this corridor is really different than Roosevelt, right? Well, okay, let me just state the obvious, right? It's really different than Roosevelt. There's not going to be a whole lot of areas where just commercial retail kind of stuff can be dropped in. There's a couple of sites that are frankly south of St. Charles Road as you get closer to Roosevelt, right? This area kind of goes up from where that study started. One of the charges in this project for us as the consultant was to look at key development sites, like those, right? And these are listed in the existing condition study, if you want to take a look there. We didn't really find any great sites. There's not just, oh, this one can be the new shopping center, or the new... We're going to be a little bit challenged to identify what are those best opportunities. If those opportunities were there, that'd be the sort of thing we'd look at, but it's not.
I mean, selfishly, I saw, I mean, sorry.
Alderman Messina?
Selfishly, I saw, yeah, right, north, between north, I think I saw a few plotted north, between north and St. Charles.
Yeah.
And then I didn't see anything, which is a good thing, in my opinion, at least in our little, what are you calling it, the quadrant three, between Oak Meadows and Irving. I know there's a decent-sized plot of land there for sale, but I didn't see that as marked.
Right.
So I'm encouraged by that, and I'm guessing you're going to go around and ask everybody, I think you mentioned, what's most important? I mean, to me personally, and obviously everyone else has their own opinion, to me, it's a very, that's why I think I'm so upset about this, is it's a very, very, in my opinion, simple problem to solve. It's code enforcement, very simple.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody, any other questions? Okay.
Again, we'll be doing this, as I said, through...
Oh. Mayor Police?
Sounds like you're wrapping up, and you said you were going to give us dates on those open houses, but I haven't seen them yet.
If we're done with the general discussion, and again, I would say, if anybody comes up with anything, or you're paging through the report, trying to get to sleep one night, and you think of something, you know where to find us. Next steps. So we're going to do these workshops with each of the towns that are part of the discussion, and we'll also do it with the land use committee of the county board. And then there will be two open houses, so this I will speak clearly into the microphone. We're looking for members of Wooddale and all of the other communities to come and share their ideas. You'll recall the open houses we had here for the comprehensive plan. This is just the kind of event that we're looking to have related to this plan as well, and looking for people to come and share their ideas at the Elmhurst City Hall, May sixteenth. These are from six o'clock to eight o'clock, it's a drop-in, just again, like we did here. And the exact same thing, this has not come to both, this is an either-or, at the Bensonville Village Hall on May twenty-third, six to eight p.m.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick question, on those...
Alderman Messina?
Sorry. On those two meetings, is it open to the public, or just Elmhurst residents and Bensonville residents?
Open to the public.
Okay. Ed, we have a plan to communicate this to...
We were just talking about that.
Yeah, we're going to have Grant kind of post that on all our social media, and I'll get you some text to do all that with in the next couple of days.
Alderman Sorrentino, you have a question, Don?
I was curious, between on that corridor, why Wooddale's not on here?
Oh, in terms of the open houses?
Yeah.
Oh, well, we were, we're not doing an open house in each community, we were just charged with doing the two open houses, so we just...
Charged her with it.
What? CMAP, it was part of their scope of services. And so we just kind of randomly picked. There's two at the end, if you'd all like to host one of the wrap-up ones, we'll put you down now.
Yeah.
I'd like to see a wrap-up here in town.
Okay. I'd make a note of that, follow-up with...
You just volunteered, thank you.
Any other questions? No?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good to see you all again.
Thank you.
Next items to be considered at future meetings, we don't have anything on the list, is there anything anybody would want to put on there? Alderman Sorrentino, there's something you'd like to put on the...
Yes, I would like to, sometime in the future, bring forward our revised condensed code of conduct for the elected officials, including the ethics. We'll do it in stages if we could, where I'd introduce it to the individual council members.
I was going to say, that...
Is that the...
That's your committee.
Wrong committee? Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the...
That's all right.
I'll get it out there one day.
You'll get it. Mayor Police?
I'm out somewhere.
You wanted to add something?
Yeah. We can get an update on where we stand on all the annexations that we were, that we went after some of the low-hanging fruit that we offered, and I'm just curious where we stand. It's probably not a discussion, maybe just a manager's report or something.
Okay. Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, maybe in the manager's report, I'd like to see what it would take to annex those properties on eighty-three.
We already have that. It's in the big report.
Is it in the...
It's in the report, it's one of the sections, yes, sir.
All right. Anything else, there being none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned.
Call the Public Works Committee to order. Roll call, minute ticker, take note that everyone's still here. Randy's in the...
Oh, he's right there, okay, sorry.
Who's the chief? I need approval minutes for April eleventh, twenty nineteen, Public Works Committee. Motion? Where's the second roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. I think we got a report and recommendation for approval of agreement between the city of Wooddale and R.J.N. group for the fiscal year 2020 infiltration and inflow project in the negative received amount of fifteen, one hundred and fifty-four thousand... Are you done? One hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars, and then one motion.
Second.
Roll call. There a question? Mayor?
Yeah, as we go through this, these phases, I think we're noticing that we're getting less infiltration, right, every time it rains, we're plugging up the hose. I'm sorry, a brand-new Brett, you probably don't know. Do we know, Jeff?
Roger.
Well, I mean, I can speak to it a little, and then fine gentleman to my right can speak to it. Obviously, we've been doing this for quite some time now. If it wasn't successful, we really wouldn't be doing it. We have to do it, so we have seen improvements. This is one of the areas, and I'll step back. We plan first for areas in town, and then we actually do the construction. So we've done the construction on a number of areas that we've already planned for, so now we're moving on to new areas with the plan, but, yeah, we have seen improvements, but...
Mayor?
I'm only asking because, you know, we know, but the residents, they see us spending another hundred and fifty-four thousand, and they don't know, so I just wanted to...
This is actually a vital program for each and every community. These dollars need to be spent, it's a vital program for wastewater, without it, we'd be in trouble, and we probably wouldn't function efficiently, but I'm talking way more than I should, so you guys...
No, no.
If I could just add something, so in 2018, we experienced two sanitary sewer overflows, so basically, this area that we're talking about addressed here, and we have Michael Young here from R.J.N., would help address those.
Should I give you a little antecedent, Mike? Yeah, so just, I just want to give, you know, a little bit of background in terms of, in terms of just briefly, I'm not doing a full presentation, you don't want to hear me talk about sewers for half an hour, I could, but you don't want to listen to me, I've done it before, but, just, it's been a few years since I've been here kind of talking about the program, so just really quick, basically what we're doing is we're doing investigation first, and then we go, and then we fix, and we fix things. So it actually started with some flow monitoring we did to kind of prioritize areas, you'll know it on the map, this map is in the back of the proposal, too, that you've got in your packet. The northern part that's industrial and a little bit of the residential was all stuff that the areas was fine, so we don't, that's why it's not even colored in here at all, because there was no, there weren't significant issues with high flows there. The southern part, what we did was the part we wanted to focus on, it's kind of completed on there, we started with the investigation there, and then moved to rehabilitation. We don't want to just study stuff, but actually fix things. Just to know what we're fixing, where, if there's a point of repair, we actually got to fix a spot in a sewer where we got to dig, hopefully minimize that, but if we need to do that, we do. Then we line the sewers, and we rehab the manholes, it's really the main things that we're doing. So not only is it reducing flow, it's also extending the life of your system, extending the life of the sewers themselves and the manholes going forward as well. So we finished, the area that we said before is all finished, all the rehabilitation is done, so with this year, we're moving on to a new area of study, which is, this area kind of in blue there, that's north of Irving Park and east of Salt Creek. That's the area that we're focused on next, based upon discussion with staff of where there had been some issues, so that's, this year's primarily a study area, we'll determine what needs to be fixed, and then there'll be a month, depending what we find, there'll be a multi-year, probably a two- to four-year plan of fixing those sewers before and beyond. So that's just kind of a really quick summary of the program we're looking at.
Mayor, do you have a follow-up?
And basically, that's why I was asking, just so that people know what's going on, especially, I know we send out a letter when we're doing the smoke testing, because if somebody's illegally hooked up, their house might look like it's on fire, because they're going to get smoke inside, and then we'll know that they're illegally hooked up.
Right, and, yeah, when we're doing the smoke testing, generally, what should happen if everything's plumbed right, the smoke should come out, the vent stack at the roofs, you'll actually see come out, and that's actually a good thing, that's supposed to do. Sometimes it's leak hooked up, sometimes there's no traps, we've had things of laundry on a second floor, where there's no trap on it, and it might come out there, so sometimes there's a plumbing issue. Generally, if smoke enters a home, it's a plumbing issue that the resident should know anyways, which is good for them to fix. And usually when they come out, we explain to them, like, oh, I always wondered what that smell was in my basement, that smelled like sewer. Well, just put a little water every once in a while on your floor trap in the basement, and you won't get that smell anymore. Oh, great, you know, so sometimes it's really just a simple thing that occurs with that, too.
Alderman Jacob? When you're doing this study, does this also, like, I know eventually water mains, you know, they have a certain life, so do your sewer lines. When we're doing this, this extends the life, what is the average life of the sewer line?
So typically, until the mid-seventies, most of the sewers were clay pipe, which tends to, since, correct, so a lot of the building that was done in the fifties and sixties, there's, you know, huge development and so forth with that. So a lot of that is reaching, you know, near its end of its useful life, fifty years or so it's been, it's, you know, it's time for that to be done. The line itself adds another fifty or so years to it when it's done well. Certainly, there's been lining done for about thirty years now that that's in good shape, so...
So this, in effect, is helping extend the life of all the sewers?
It's helping extend the life of it, it is, like, this year, a lot of the sewers are in the backyards, so if there happens to emergency repair that city staff has to deal with, it's very difficult for them to get back there and deal with that. So if we can get in and line it and fix it ahead of time, so they don't have to worry about it or deal with that on an emergency basis, and do it for thirty dollars a foot instead of three hundred dollars a foot, or a thousand dollars a foot or more, depending on how much it is, it's, you know, it's a great investment for you as well.
Yeah.
Follow-up?
Yeah, just one final question. Now, if there was a problem where the lining wasn't good enough, I mean, you guys would be able to find that out now throughout this testing, right?
Yes, they have to, they pre-televise to make sure there aren't any issues whatsoever with it, they can line it correctly, and then they post-televise it, and we review that to make sure, so if there's any issues with the line that they didn't do it correctly, they've got to go back and fix it. The same thing with the manholes, if, when there's manhole rehab done, there's a pressure test done with it, if it doesn't meet the pressure test, they've got to figure out where that was, and they got to fix it.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Wesley?
So my question is, the stuff that's completed, that means there's no more coming into our treatment plant, all of those been sealed and...
There is, there is, there is, from the public side, if you remember me back, you've been around for a while dealing with this, that we did look at some of the things in the homes, so if there is, we are not, with this, we're only looking at the public system, we are not doing building inspections, so if there's a sump pump directly connected to the sanitary system, we are not, those are not being dealt with. So right now, we're only dealing with the public system, so the public sewers and manholes is what we're actually fixing.
Follow-up?
Yes, I'm sorry. Correct me, when we did this program at one time, when we started this program, maybe you could, this is, I thought we were also supposed to go back and take care of those sewer, I mean, those sump pump things, too, that was part of this first project.
The first, the initial stage didn't do building inspection, and there was discussion The first, the initial stage didn't do building inspection, and there was discussion on that, and, and the decision, I don't know if Jeff, if you remember the details of that, the decision was not, was made to not move forward with that and follow up with, with actually disconnecting, you know, that part of the system. It is certainly something that can be done. I think part of it was how the follow-up was, and obviously if you're doing the inspections without follow-up, it, it.
Mr. Murris?
I think it was looked at as being a little bit more cumbersome to actually get that done, and maybe, I don't want to say intrusive, but it was a major task to do some of that work. And we decided to more go with the easier fixes than what you're talking about.
Mr. Sorrentino?
What are you referring to here with the sanitary sewers? Does this have any impact, either positive or negative, on flooding issues?
It, it, it certainly can have some impact. It doesn't have a lot. But certainly areas that are prone to flooding can have a higher amount of that water also getting into the sanitary system. And obviously, as much as flooding can be an issue, having sewage in your basement, anybody that's had it, you know, that can, that can even be a bigger issue, so. But it doesn't, I mean, the amount of, the amount of water getting into the sources, even that, so, so we've had questions on that before of going, "Well, if we, if we line this, is it making the storm worse?" And it, there's such a minimal impact, that it's like less than one percent of an impact on the storm. So it's not, it's not making it worse by, by reducing the amount of storm flow that gets into the sanitary system.
My follow-up to that is, when you pick these areas, is there any rhyme or reason to the areas that you decide to go with?
Yes. So last year in 2018, would it be okay if I just spent a few seconds going over infiltration and flow and what its impacts are? Thank you. Oh, thank you. So basically, what it is, is Mike talked about the clay pipes. They start to get breaches in them. When the groundwater gets to where the sewer elevation is, water starts flowing in there. When the water starts flowing in there, there's two major impacts it has on the community. One, it can cause, the plant can only take so much, so then it starts to overflow the manholes. We had two of them that happened in 2018 that were related to this particular system that we're talking about tonight. So that's in violation of the Clean Water Act, so we had to report that to IEPA, so that's one of the things to address. The second thing, that's also important also, is you're now treating, you're paying to treat in a plant water that shouldn't be coming to you. So it's increasing your operating costs at the plant. So it's, it's really helping us in two areas. One, compliance with our regulatory agency, and then the second thing, we're now paying to treat water that really shouldn't be coming to us.
No, it sounds a little bit more important than just one percent after what he just said. So I don't know why the wards that flood aren't addressed before the area that you said, Irving Park North, on, what was it, Arlington Heights Road or something? The wards were done already? Ward three done already?
The. Yeah, we've done that area. We've done a lot of areas, and this really isn't about flooding. This is about sanitary sewers, not really storm sewers. So this is sanitary sewers, and this impacts our treatment plant. So it's really kind of two separate issues.
Yeah, so when you're going to actually do the, well, you're going to do the study, then you're going to actually do the smoke test. Will the residents be notified about the smoke test?
Yeah, so, so there's, there's multiple ways that that's, that that's being done. There's a, a letter we'll draft up, but it'll actually be sent, the city staff will actually send it out, so it's on city letterhead, about it coming, and then we will actually put door hangers out twenty-four to seventy-two hours ahead of time, letting, letting people know about it. We've actually, even since the last time we've done it here, we've actually updated that. We've got a little detail then, particularly on the traps, what to, where to put water in, if you've got some issues, because lots of times that's where smoke can get into the home. So we have that information. It has contact information for RJN. It has contact information if, if they want to call Public Works to have any questions on that. All of that's in there. We can certainly also put maps and other information on the city's website as well, so that information is there as well. I can reference that in the letter and the door hangers.
What stops residents from, you already, letting them know that they're, you're coming out to do this, and just shut it off? Have a, have a way to stop the smoke from coming in?
Well, it, you know, and most of the time, if the smoke is getting into their homes and they find it, we actually want, we actually don't really want this, because we're not testing things in the home anyways. We actually don't want the smoke in the home. We're at, what the smoke test, basically, the idea behind smoke testing is, we blow smoke into the sewers, and it rises out, and wherever the smoke comes out, rainwater can get in. That's basically the thought behind it. So if there's something directly connected, an area drain or something that, if there's a crack in the, in the sewer, if there's issue with the, with the manhole coming out of the lateral from the home, we can actually, it comes through the ground, and we can actually see those things.
No, that's what I'm saying, to some people, if there's a sump pump up to their sanitary, which is a relief.
Right, right, no, and if, well, it's not an easy thing for them to change. I mean, there is, you know, when we've done building inspections with it in different places, sometimes they'll have, they'll have a two-way valve, a diverter valve, where they can actually pump it out, pump the, the storm flow outside like they should, and or they can switch to the sanitary, and they could switch that. Again, if we're doing building inspections, we would directly adjust that. With what we're doing here in the smoke testing, we're not going in the homes. The only reason we'd ever go in a home is there's smoke in a home, and a resident comes out and asks us to come in and look at it. We don't even come in either unless the resident specifically asks us to look at it. Would be the only reason we would even come, go in a home with the work that we're doing.
Just so people are clear, this I N I does not have to do anything with flooding. Basically, when it rains, rainwater goes into the storm sewers. It should not be going into the sanitary sewers, which puts us into excess flows. And when we're in excess flows too many times, we will get dinged by the IEPA for having too much infiltration into our system, and that's why we need to fix our system. It has nothing to do with flooding, just so people understand, we need to plug up the holes. So when it rains, the treatment plant shouldn't go for, shouldn't go from a million gallons to two million gallons, because rainwater does not go to the treatment plant. That's the simple fact.
Got a motion, a second? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Musley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Sizemirsky?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, I have future items. Senior grass program, May and June, and yard drainage, not-for-profit, May and June. Anything else to be added to the list? None? I'll make a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.